Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all those who passed away during the month. And the mayor has something he would like to say.
Thank you. Over the last month, Bristol Borough unfortunately lost a handful of Bristolians that I think were near and dear to a lot of people in town, especially myself. For me, the first was my Aunt Dee, Donetta Berardis, who was a staple of Cedar Street. She was a regular at all the Bingo's in town, St. Anne's Carnival, and in one of the first pews at Sunday Mass at St. Anne's every Sunday. The other was Lee Memmy, who was a staple of Grand Avenue for many, many years, and a dear friend of my grandmother's and my mother's, and I'd like to keep both of them in your prayers during this moment of silence. We also have my buddy, who passed away, Art Camerata, who, if you knew Art, he was a WWII veteran. He stormed the beaches of Normandy on D-Day. He was at the Battle of the Bulge. And anyone who knew what Art does, or did, he was one of the best alarm guys in the area, and he could fish a wire through a pinhole for three stories. He was one of the best around. Then there was Bristol's own Donnie Crowe, past president of the Bucks County Rescue Squad in America Hose Hook and Ladder. A lot of us knew Donnie Crowe from working the concession stand at Fifth Ward Pool, selling pretzels and water ice, and giving his famous saying, "Hey, would that be cash or money?" He was one of the biggest cheerleaders for Bristol Borough and loved everything that was good about the Borough. And then the last person I want to remember was a dear family friend, someone that we all knew as a Little League umpire, Cub Scout leader, and a drummer with the Bracken Cadets, and that was Albert "Burt" Adamson. Growing up on Wood Street, if you ever had the privilege of growing up there as a kid or even just visiting, you knew that there are some of the best memories were created on the 900 block of Wood Street. Always an open door, always a good time, and Burt would always meet you with a smile and a "Yo, pal." My life has definitely been better knowing these men and women over the years, and I know the residents of Bristol Borough were touched by each one of these people, and our little community has been blessed by God to know these five individuals who are unfortunately no longer with us. Thank you.
All of the same, my spirit. Please look the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peza.
Here.
Ms. Coblen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez. I think she's ill this evening. Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Croce.
Present.
Mr. Giuseppe.
Here.
So before we continue with anything, I'd like to let everybody know at home that we have a new system in place tonight. We have all-new monitors in the TV room. We've got new cameras put in, so we're trying to increase the television for people at home. Right now, there's a 10-second delay, so as I'm talking, for instance, if I'm talking and then the manager says something, you may be hearing the manager, but I'm still here. So we're trying to work the bugs out. If you have Verizon, you will not be able to see the meeting tonight, but it is being recorded to be put on tomorrow. Verizon was supposed to show up today to put in a new line. We're having problems with the feed coming in, and they will be out tomorrow, I guess, because of the weather today, they couldn't make it. So give us a chance to work through a couple things, and we'll try to figure out what's going on, but hopefully we work out the bugs tonight. But I know there is a delay, and I'm already getting texts from people saying that the voice doesn't coincide with what's going on, so we're trying our best. But we did purchase all-new equipment. Chief.
Just to let everybody know, we got a grant for aggressive driving that we started. Everybody should mind the stop signs and stop, slow down going through town, and keep in mind that the weather's breaking, it's going to be lighter longer, and the kids are going to be out, so you're going to see a lot of police cars out there in the next few weeks while we have this grant money from the state.
I want to go back to public participation, so nobody's here. Aaron and Stacy are here to speak on recreation, so why don't either both of you, or one at a time, go to the podium.
Can Chuck speak real quick?
Pardon me?
Can Chuck, Officer Palmer, speak?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know. I thought he was just here working.
I'm sorry.
Get out, Chuck.
I'm sorry.
We don't want to hold you up, not in uniform.
I have to go home and eat. Do I need to pick this up, or is it...
No, I don't pick you up.
Okay. I just, I want to start first by thanking the council, past and present. I don't remember who was here when I first got kilo, but it was, and try not to get upset. Incredible experience, something that I'm sure I'll never experience again. With that, I would also like to thank you guys all and ladies for the plaque. It's amazing, you can see it down in the best wheel down at the station. I'd like to thank Danny Keegan and Galsarana Trillo home for the incredible earn that they made, tribute of him, and just thanks a lot. It meant a lot to me, and it meant a lot to my family, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Even at that.
I remember sending you to school.
Yes. It was a long time ago. I don't remember exactly who was here and who wasn't. I know you were. Honestly, I don't, I think you were, were you here then?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I think I might be the only one.
You're the only one. You're all over.
Betty was here.
Betty and I.
Betty was here.
It's, I know there's a lot of dog lovers in your, and I know the relationship, because I've always had a dog. I did not realize how it was going to be, and it was, it's tough.
It's emotional.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm not getting another one, Chuck.
But I'd let you guys know, he did have an incredible life after work. Especially after I got married, he got a second wind. He was on the downslope when I was living alone. My daughter was at college, he was not doing good. I didn't expect him to live another year. When I got married and he had a family and kids, he went from this salty old veteran to me getting videos every day of him eating meatballs. He's Italian now. He's Italian now.
That's what did it, you know?
Yeah, and he lived the next four years, whatever it's been, and it's, you know, he led a very, he was very happy those last few years with all the kids and family and home, so anybody who's loved him.
Thank you.
But thank you so much for everything you did to support me and him, so.
Anytime.
Thank you. Everybody? I mean, I...
Okay, Aaron's. So I asked Aaron to come in tonight, Stacy, to give us a little update on where we are with recreation, just so everybody at home knows what's going on and what the plans are. And before he gets started, I really want to thank Lorraine and Brian for all their hard work and effort that they're putting into these deals to try to make this recreation program really something special, so. Lorraine, thanks, and Brian, thank you. I know you guys are meeting constantly. Floor's yours, buddy.
How are you?
I got a clock on you.
I'm, I'm, I'm working.
Oh, yeah.
So I talk a lot, and I apologize in advance. So I've done with the best of intent.
Probably a 10-second delay, so.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Antonelli. I'm a member of the Bristol Rec Board. As you know, the goal of the Rec Board is to provide options for the kids of the Borough to get out and get involved in activities they may otherwise not be able to do. However, either due to personal preference or schedule, some kids aren't able to attend the sports program we currently have and will offer in the future. While supporting the kids of the Borough is a priority, we'd also like to offer something adults can do with their children, or simply as a leisure to them if they choose. We want to get people outside and enjoying the many things that the Borough has to offer, which brings me to the canal on Jefferson Avenue. My family and I, as well as many others, have enjoyed many nice days fishing at the lagoon and canal. The police department also sponsors the Fish with a Cop in Town. As the Rec Board, we want to provide them with as many opportunities to catch and release a diverse spectrum of species. We want kids and adults alike to enjoy themselves, to get outside and keep coming back. That's why we'd like to propose stocking the park off Jefferson Ave. with a robust collection of fish. I've been in contact with the Fish and Boat Commission, as well as a biologist that works for them. According to Fish and Boat, there are no rules or regulations that prevent the stocking of fish. The biologist provided recommendations for the number of fish and size of fish that could be supported in the current ecological system. Following the recommendations, I've received a quote from a hatchery in order to fulfill this goal. Tonight, you ladies and gentlemen are the last piece of the puzzle. I'm, I'm, I'm here to ask you to approve the proposal so that we may add another activity for the people of Bristol Borough and maybe beyond to get out there and enjoy. I'm happy to provide the quote in my email's correspondence with Fish and Boat. If requested, thank you for your consideration, and I can answer any questions.
Aaron, why don't you let everybody at home know and council, how much, how many fish are being put into that?
All right, so the, um, the stocking is going to entail about 200 fish. You can't just go into a body of water like that and just cram as many fish in it as you want. The ecological system, it's just, it's a bio load. So what we're doing is, we're doing 200 fish, we're doing 50 largemouth bass, they're coming between six to nine inches, 50 bluegill, which are going to be six to nine inches, and 200 crappie, and 4,000 minnows to sustain whatever the bass and the bluegill will need in the crappie while they grow. Within the first year, the largemouth bass and the sunnies and the crappie will all procreate and will have spawn by the end, but will by the beginning of next year. The, the goal is to maintain the ecological system, that's why we did the checks and balances, you know, per bill and a few other, Ralph, you know, we wanted to make sure we were doing things right, and we got the stamp of approval to do so. The 4,000 minnows are to feed, all the fish we're getting are aggressive, so they need something until the ecosystem gets going. So that's basically it in a nutshell. We roughly have three and a half acres with the fountain, and the oxygenation levels will be high, the water agitation will be perfect, and, you know, hopefully we do this once or twice, and the canal will be a great place to go, and just how many kids go out there and cast their rods at law? So it's just something fun, and my wife's really competitive, and she's tired of not catching anything.
People catch, whenever they catch, they...
They release, absolutely, yeah.
And that'll help over the next couple of years.
Yeah, that is imperative, that if they don't catch and release, well, one, if they're not legal to catch and bring home, so the catch and release program is really important for the kids to sustain catching fish over the duration of however long it entails. Um, I wanted to just say, give a little background on basketball. We have 240 kids that are signed up. We have 600 kids in the school. So Brian, Tyree, Barnes, and Mike Popoloski have gone above and beyond with this program. I mean, Brian is there 30 to 40 hours a week. I've seen it, it's amazing, and these kids are loving life. They got the buzzer going, they have the shot clock, we keep score, they have shirts on, and they, they feel like they're winning a championship. I mean, we have overtime games, the parents get into it, they laugh, they scream, they get upset, they get happy. You just see everything out there. Brian did that. Brian did a great job, and I don't know if you have any feedback that you want to give, but... No? Okay. It is the largest program that the Rec has done as of yet. You know, dude, you got more than one third of the school movement. Good job. I wanted to thank just Mike, Stacy, Tyree, Harold, Sandy, Lee, Nick, Brianna, they're on the Rec Board with me. They do an amazing job in support, and it's only going to get better. I wanted to thank Thorey Morgan, Mike Ladler, Ashley Thompson, Jose Contreras, Heather Veering, and I don't know Rich's name, but they're all coaches that volunteer on multiple nights, and they show up when we really need them, and, you know, we need the support of the volunteers in this town. We need more, we need more involvement, we need more involvement from the parents, more involvement with the kids. The more involvement we get, the bigger this program gets, but we need supervision, and without Bristol Borough and the, and the parents, we can't do it. And we, that, that, that's basically all I have to say this evening. And I do want to thank council for allowing us to do this. This has been amazing, the support that we get from Lorraine, your husband, Brian, you know, Ralph, and everybody else, and I still know that you have nice hair back there. I haven't forgotten.
Oh, I knew it. He said he used to. I knew it.
And that's all, guys. Thank you very much.
Aaron, I just want to say before you, you leave, that we have a system now in place where the board is now creating which sports are going to be played at what time and different things like that, so I'm glad there's going to be a schedule that you could come back and update council on to let us know, you know, what's coming up next.
So in about two weeks, predicated on which platform we go to, Lorraine, we kind of talked about briefly about maybe utilizing the web portal, maybe getting the school district involved. The issue that we're having is that not everybody has social media, so if, if, everybody has internet now, internet has become, you know, as much as your electric bills, it's an essential now, so if they can get internet access, we can streamline it and guide them to either one or two focal points.
All right.
So that's all.
Also, we want to say something. Aaron was nominated as the president of our group at the last meeting, and I think he is a great president.
Thank you.
For taking charge, you're finding, you're, you're the kind of person that does the job. Like, you say you're going to do it, but you do it, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thanks.
So it's that time of year where I come up and let you all know where we stand with Little League. So opening day is April 15th. Would love to see everyone come out. If you would like to speak, say a few words, we would absolutely love it. Our mayor hit a little bit of a heartstring there. I spoke with the Adamson family, and I'm waiting to get approval, but we're going to make a dedication to Mr. Adamson at opening day. He was a, he was an integral part of Little League. He was a coach, he was a mentor, he was an umpire, he was a board member, that man did it all. He was one of the reasons that I got to start playing softball at eight years old, because he was a part of that board that brought softball to Bristol Borough. So we're reaching out, once the family approves it, of course, but we're reaching out to any of his players, anyone who had any kind of connection to him with Little League, if they'd like to come out and speak opening day and say a few words, reach out to us. We would love to have them out there, just to show how many lives this man touched just through being who he was, you know, the amazing person that he was, not only a family man, but community, a businessman, he just was phenomenal. There are no, no words to explain how wonderful that man was. With that being said, we are one team shy, well, we're four players shy of having our identical numbers from last year. We picked up an extra junior boys' team where we lost a senior boys' team, we're still trying to fill that gap, and we're looking for girls that are 11, 12 years old, or a really strong 10, to round out that last team. I'm trying to think what else I had to give you guys. Oh, big news, really big news. District 21 has, or Little League International, has a program called the Challenger Program. This program is basically set up for special needs children. Over the last eight years, maybe nine, Levittown Continental has held a charter, they got that big beautiful foam field with donations to hold this program. The program there was dwindling, the last three years, we've been approaching, we want this program in Bristol, we want this program in Bristol, we want this program in Bristol. Well, finally, the breakthrough. We are now one of the charters for our Challenger Program. We will be putting up more information. I have a meeting with Dr. Ann and Thorey Morgan on Thursday. We're going to put the program together, start registration. We will be taking children with special needs anywhere from Ben Salem, Middletown, Fairliss Hills, Levittown, Croydon, Bristol Borough, Meschampany, Pendale, they can all come here insured under the Little League Charter. They're going to give me setup information, because this one's beyond my grasp, I can kind of organize, but they're going to have to tell me what to do, so I'm going to sit down with the two of them. But it's going to bring children who normally wouldn't have access to this program to our town to be able to play ball. We're hoping we get a good amount of kids. I believe it's four through 21. I have to double-check that, don't quote me on it. We're working on which field would best be accessible for them. We've made it clear that we do not have ADA compliant, you know, walkways, bathrooms, and everyone is okay with that, they just want the kids to play. So we, as a Borough, do not have to make any accommodations as far as anything on that complex, these kids just want to play ball. So it's kind of a big win for us and to grow the program and get the kids that we have here, because we do have a large quantity of children in town with special needs, and this will accommodate them to be able to play ball.
I think it's great.
Awesome.
How many kids do we have signed up in Little League?
Two, I want to say it's 253, and I'm waiting on seven more boys who are confirmed but didn't fill out the papers yet.
Yeah, of course.
I know we like to put a deadline, but we never turn anybody away.
So the deadline was Sunday, but I can tell you, I can show you the text messages on my phone, it's the Bristol way. Stacy, I didn't get out there to sign up, can I sign my kid up? Yes, so I have text messages with kids' shirt sizes and their birth date, and I'll be filling those out later tonight. So there are some teams that are full. Our junior boys right now is holding at 20 kids. We're hoping to pick up a few more to round out and make that two teams. Our senior boys' team didn't go as well as we thought it was going to, but Danny Iala had that team last year, his entire team aged out, but four boys. And we have those four boys signed up, but we need them, they'll either play in another Little League, or we'll get, you know, eight more boys to come play here. We are still open T-ball, mini-ball, and like I said, we're looking for major girls of 11, 12. Aaron is going to be coaching one of our seven, eight teams, we have two teams in that division, so we could, we had to look for two more boys there, our nine, 10s are full, both sides, so the teams are packed.
Good.
The teams are packed.
All right. Any questions for Stacy?
Opening day, April 15th at 11:00 a.m. pre...
15.
April 15th.
Parks Day.
And I will reach out to all the powers that be in the room, with the fire department, the police department, and Mr. Winslow sitting over there, to make sure that everything is set up correctly, as I do every year. Thank you so much for every answer, it's a good thing you got us.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
So there is no public participation, so I'll end public. Back to Police Chief, does anyone have any questions for Joe? Herbie, what do you have?
I've got a couple things. One, as everybody knows, it's just, it's past weekend, change your clock, change your battery, if you still have smoke detectors, you have to change the batteries on, down some time to do it. The second thing I just want to mention, the police chief and I had the opportunity to go over to Spider's Garage, you know, just two weeks ago, to read to a fifth-grade class, and it was just an exceptional experience to get to read to those kids, but what was even better was all of the questions that they had for the police and the fire chiefs after, after they, we got done reading them. It was just a great experience.
All right.
The third thing I want to mention is, and I know the police chief's been working really hard on this, and that's parking in town. We had an incident in the 200 block of Cleveland Street where we got a fire. At quarter to two in the morning, the first fire truck coming off of Farragut Avenue had trouble getting onto the street because of the parking. Once they got onto the street, there was a second problem, because not all the cars were tight against the curb. The fire hydrant there had to be on three foot of access, the fire cutter could just barely get between the cars to get the fire hydrant. Fire truck coming off of Wilson Avenue could not get onto the street at all because of the park. So people need to make sure, I know parking's fine, it's fine in my neighborhood, but parking on corner and parking on hydrants is, is going to lead to a serious disaster at some point. Fortunately, this was only a circuit breaker, but it had been a really serious fire, we would have had a lot of trouble.
Which street did you say?
It was Cleveland Street. So actually, if you look at, like, Bristol's a lot of tight, one-way streets, and on any one of those streets, it's often hard to get onto that street because of the parking that's right up to the corner. And then again, people squeeze the fire hydrants as much as they can. They think that, you know, if you're riding by and there's this much room and you can see the fire hydrant, that's sufficient room, but that's not really sufficient room to do that, so. And then I know the chief's been working on that really hard with us, guys. The last thing that I want to mention was the Gen 10, items nine and 10, which have to do with the fire companies. The Bristol Consolidated and Bristol Fire Company participated in a regional grant with two Ben Salem Fire Company, two Bristol Township Fire Companies and a Ben Salem Fire Company. We were, we were successful as part of that grant. We got self-contained breathing apparatus, which are, there's a measure when you go into a fire or hazardous material incident. The, for Bristol Consolidated, the total cost was $106,000, of which the federal government paid $93,000, which, that meant that share, our share was only $13,000. And for Bristol Fire Company, the total was $114,000, of which the federal share was $100,000, and fire company share, the borough share in this case, is $14,000. So we received $220,000 worth of critical personal protective equipment for $27,000. So it's a great, it's a great program that the federal government has to support fire companies, and they run it every year. It's very competitive, it's hard to get, and we were fortunate enough to get this equipment.
That's great. Any questions for Herbie?
I just have one question. I wanted to ask Mr. Dillon if there was a website yet for the no-run property?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Great. It's, you know, listening to a lot of the sentiments of tonight from the mayor and from Stacy, it's, and also, Rec kind of just brings back a lot of memories and things kind of come full circle. You know, among the people that, that the mayor mentioned, you know, a lot of the people, if you grew up in this town, you just, you've known them your whole life, and Mr. Crowe was one of those guys, you know, just the personality and just a great man, and, you know, I know he was in, in the Manor House, I forget if that...
Meschampany.
Meschampany, Meschampany Manor, sorry. That was in kind of middle, upper Bucks, yet still rooting for Bristol, you know, every way, every chance he had on, on Facebook and in social media. My, actually, my wife's grandmother found herself there, she's not from town, she doesn't know anybody, and, and they met, and it was quite an experience for her, she was really moved by how just nice and welcoming he really was. And then, of course, Mr. Adamson, who, you know, some of my fondest memories as a kid in this town are playing Little League baseball and Mr. Adamson being around, and then also our rivalry against St. Anne's and Mr. Ri, Mr. Adamson being around as well, just like we were frenemies, right? We were enemies in the winter and friends during the spring, not real enemies, obviously, but just a great, great person, and, and he will be sorely missed. But that, as you said, I actually want to address a little bit about Rec as well. I'm running a small program, much smaller than what they're doing at Rec at St. Mark's for K through third graders, and what's great in this world, like, like I said, one of my fondest memories, and I wouldn't give it up for the world, is when we were kids, we had the opportunity to compete. And I know there's a lot of sentiment that maybe competition isn't the best, but I think we've gone too far in that direction, where there's definitely some good things that come out of competing, and we had some of the best experiences ever. I think I can speak for the mayor, and he can say the same thing, as a St. Anne's guy and I was a St. Mark's person, and Lorraine was very much involved, and Mr. Patroci and this whole family, and, but it's been a lot more difficult these days to compete, because in a small town like this, everything has just gotten big, so you, you know, there are no more St. Anne's and St. Mark's rivals in the world, or St. Andrews that's got 2,000 kids, and you can't compete with them. And then you have the same deal, you know, on a lower level. So anyway, I bring all that up to say that it's nice to hear about some of those figures in town that, that made that happen when we were kids, and that there's a lot of people working now to try to do that again. working now to try to do that again. And I've been talking with Brian about possibly having a tournament for the young kids with St. Mark's and the Borough RAC being involved, and maybe people get a little sense of what that fun in-town competition used to be like. Friendly, all good, but intense, and I think a good experience. So Brian and I have been discussing that. I think we want to move forward. So good job that everybody involved, and thank you.
You're being really nice.
Oh, yeah. Right. No, it was pretty fiery back in the day.
Brian, you have anything?
With our creation basketball, like Greg said, we've been working on getting tournaments on. We're also looking at getting some of the kids, we'll try to put it on the internet. So people will come out and see if it's, if it's not, we'll have these. So you guys will want to see it.
And when are you there, Brian?
I'm in sixth grade Monday and Wednesday, and then Monday, fourth, Thursday, Friday, every day of the week.
And what, from what time?
From like six till seven thirty, five thirty, seven thirty.
All right. Maria Figueroa.
Just again, a reminder that the town cleanup is April 15th with the rain date of April 16th. Time will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If anyone is interested in a location that they would like to see cleaned up, send me that location to my email. Also, I want to, I want to stress that I have worked very, very hard in reaching out and negotiating the cleanup all along the train track area, all through the north ward with Amtrak. Amtrak is doing their part, and so we must do our part in cleaning up. So teamwork is the best thing. So we must all work together to get it done. So with that being said, let's team up and clean up. And that's all I have.
Anything else, Maria?
No. Actually, we should, if you want to participate in cleanup, meet at the Snyder-Derotti at 9:40.
Okay. I just want to mention, first of all, I want to thank Maria because I know she's been discussing this cleanup, but she did have a meeting here with Amtrak and a lot of the officials from Amtrak to discuss possible taking down the fence and trying to clean up Garden Street, and, you know, it's a very tough route. I mean, she's trying her hardest to get it done, and I know people before her have tried, but I don't know if it's going to happen. I mean, they're saying that, they're going to look into it, but there's so many things that are going on that, but she did get a meeting here, so that's a plus. And they didn't say 100% no. They're going to bring it back to their people, but let's see how it goes. But again, I know you put a lot of time out there to try and get this meeting, and you did, were successful in getting the officials to come here, so I give you a lot of credit for that.
And also, you know, they have, and it will be their part as far as cleaning along the area is. So that is a big plus.
All right. Maria?
I want to thank Maria because she has certainly taken this cleanup, in charge, which has gotten us all involved, and thank you for that. Parking has been an issue for many years in town, and it was one of the issues that I wanted to address when I came on board as a council person. And even though it's, it always becomes a problem, comes with a head, and always seems like something else steps in in front of it, but I am, I'm, I'm to the point now where we've got to work on it. I worked with Dr. Manetti at the high school before the pandemic to get kids involved in doing surveys of parking areas, public parking areas, and commercial parking spaces and spaces to the boroughs. And then COVID came along, and Dr. Manetti took the job elsewhere, and China just fell by the wayside. But I am, I talked to Donnie Cluskey, I talked to Bill Perez, who was raising the bar, and discussed it, you know, for many, many years, but I want to get a committee started again that we can address this, maybe, you know, get some direction from the chief and his officers. Because if something happens and you don't know why people ask me why I'm lining the streets, and I know we tried lining the streets, and they said it didn't work, but I don't know. It's not going to create more parking places, but it might help us in directing people where parks are not parked by, or, I know sometimes you all, you know, these people are always hanging out on the corner, and yet the mayor paid a ticket, and it's the borough's fault that they got a ticket, but, we have to look at those things again. And with the, with the council's permission, I'd like to get this committee started again, and even though it all, that people in the public, that they want to serve, you know, serve in that community, to let us, you know, it's a problem that's not going away. It is bigger, bigger, bigger. And a lot of, you know, the problems with zoning, we're, sometimes dealing with parking problems that it really can't be changed. And they're making decisions to eliminate some of that parking problem. But the people, people, you know, take our decisions sometime and go to, contest it at the county level, we may lose, you know, we may lose these decisions. It's really going to create more of an issue. So I think this is something we need to address and, and, and I'd just start back up on it.
Absolutely. If you could come up with some suggestions, or, I know we're working on the years, I don't know what to talk about. Anything else? Michael?
I just want to piggyback off of Maria about Betty and myself have been aggressively hitting baseball with the cleanup and then the fire, and we haven't got a lot of response, but I know lots going on, and people come through, you know, like the week before and stuff. But I think it's really important that you let us know what areas in each ward that really need to be addressed, and perhaps volunteer to be part of that. Of course, you know, there's the, there's the gateways and the parking lot and the wharf and so forth, that's a given. But there are certain areas that really need attention just because they're not active or in the limelight all year, and they kind of, you know, with all that goes on, they kind of get a little extra messy. So I think it's really important that we give an effort. And we've done it before, you know, pre-COVID and all that, and like Maria said, she's reached out and formed these committees, and all the supplies are going to be there, and freshmen, things like that, but we need people there, and we need you to also let us know the areas so that, you know, if it doesn't get done, we say, oh, we should have did this area and stuff. So I think that's really, really important. And thank you for doing all that. And then, also with Councilman Patroci, you know, with the parking, we are, we are aware, and we have, we had begun certain things, and we're addressing it again, and we're becoming very aggressive with it. So please be patient, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Couple things, just to mention, since we're talking about parking, we are working on, or I am working on, I should say, getting more information on a more definitive approach to the app. There's so many different companies out there that you didn't, I didn't want to just come here and present the first company I talked to, because on the backend, there's a lot of, a lot of the app companies do things differently, the way they build, the way you record tickets, record keeping, things of that nature. So I think we kind of have narrowed down to two different companies that'll be most efficient for the borough and our record keeping and the police department. So I think by the time we meet again, we'll be able to do a presentation and present that to council. The other thing I wanted to mention is we hammered out a date to honor Trooper Mac, and that is going to be Thursday, March 23rd, 5:00 p.m., and it'll be right outside our Borough Police Station. So the Trooper Mac ceremony will be Thursday, March 23rd, starting at 5:00 p.m., right outside our Bristol Borough Police Station. Last two things I have is, we mentioned a lot of Bristolians who are no longer with us at the beginning of the meeting, but now I'd like to recognize two people who are with us and are celebrating two special birthdays. And one is Buster Spattacino, who turned 80 years young today, and I want to wish Buster a very happy birthday and many more happy and healthy ones. And the other special person is with us this evening, and that's our solicitor, Bill Salerno, who is celebrating his 70th birthday today, and I want to take a moment for all of us to wish Bill a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay. Maria? I got a couple things. There's a resident call about, or sent me an email about a vacant lot on Ray Street. So I think I have to get some additional information in terms of, is it a buildable lot, and get an approximate value on it. So it'll be an issue for next month, so we'll defer to the discussion, so I just want to mention that. Kim, maybe you can get council a list of vacant property, whether it's something that a neighbor might want to buy or something, you know, we have to sell them, I would have asked about the bid. But a lot of this stuff is, is not even buildable. So we're maintaining it, we're congress, so we should really start looking into trying to eliminate a lot of work for the street highway department. If there's ground, then we can say that we should look into it. And it doesn't have to be, you know, whenever. The other thing I'd like to discuss is Memorial Field. We're putting in, we want to invest some money into the fields, so we're going to be doing painting, we're going to be putting all new roofs on the thuggouts, all new doors, the bathrooms, if you just look, there's all new lighting already been put up. We put an overhead garage door in to make it easier to get in and out of. We're trying to create storage. I talked to Mr. Chicalletti in the school board, and we're trying to create storage for the varsity team and girl softball team, to store their equipment in, it's safe. So we're working on a lot of different things, and you're going to see over the summer, you know, April, May, June, hopefully by July, you see a lot of things that are done down, there are new painting and different things like that. There's also an issue with the two-story press box. It's been neglected so long that there's severe cracks until which it's unsafe, and based on a report from Gilmore, I think current, you guys are recommending that to be taken down for safety reasons. I don't think it's to a point where you could use it right now, but I think that it's something that we need to look at, of taking it down. Right, it's in your reports in the packet. We're getting the scoreboards fixed. So there's a lot going on down at the fields, and we're going to continue moving throughout town with a lot of different things. The other thing is the bid that council authorized, we got the bid for the trash collection, will be opened this Thursday, March 16th at 11:00 a.m. And anybody from the public that wants to come here for the bid opening, you're more than welcome to come here and actually watch the bids be, will be opened. And usually whoever's bidding on the contract will bring their bid with them, and it'll be opened in a public forum. So anybody that wants to come, you're more than welcome. It's this, that, this, Thursday at 11:00 a.m. We're also on the settlement, which is very good news, on two properties on March 31st on Chestnut Street. So on the right-hand side of Chestnut, there were three properties that, two were owner occupied, although it was a rental. We were able to purchase two of the three, and we signed an agreement with the third person now that will take place within the next couple of months. So we're hoping the entire right side of Chestnut Street can be taken down as soon as we settle the last property. We're working on, I think we have agreements on one or two of the properties on the left side. There's four properties on that side. We talked about Trooper Mac. Right. Maria's going to make that motion.
Can I ask Mr. Del, a quick question about the rotating? The number two on the bid, you have both things on there, so I just want to make sure we're understanding. Where is it rotating by, it says where it's going to take it from, and then you also went and noticed that it's going to be paved by Aqua. So is that on, included in our quote, or?
The conclusion of the quote is recommended by each year and solicitor that the board adopted motion that is on your agenda, when after that's done, we'll be talking to Morris about not doing that section because Aqua will be doing it. And then there's two other sections there where we've been advised at Pico, where the gas company is coming in next year, so we don't want to be paving those sections under this program. But legally, it's been recommended that we would be bid as mentioned on the agenda, but those three sections will be pulled out in time, and so there will be savings to the borough.
Being those, we are taking the option of paving the parking lot at the Big Harball Field, which is on there as an option. So, and we're going to do some drainage work behind there, too. And I forgot to tell Stacy when she was here, Mr. Del, maybe you could send her an email, that there's also still $10,000 sitting here from the Fifth Ward Club and Arthur Mann. And I think that Pat's dad, Babe's 17, donated $10,000 to Little League to be used on equipment and things like that, so just so she remembers that it's, it's sitting here. Anybody else have anything before we go into the meeting to start voting? Okay, so that ends our work session meeting. There's nobody here in the public. Kurt, do we have anything for Kurt to discuss?
I don't think so.
You good, Kurt?
All right, someone close, follow participation again, and you go to number two on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for February 13, 2023. I'd like to accept the trade report for January 2023. I'd like to accept the fire chief's report for February 2023. I'd like to accept the inspection department report for February 2023. Accept the public works department reports for February 2023. Accept the police department report for February 2023. And accept the horror report for February 2023.
Second by Mrs. Figueroa. Questions or comments? All of us in favor? Mrs. Patroci?
I'm abstaining from the horror report. I present that with the Grunge Foundation.
Okay. I should abstain too from that thing, right? Some might be doing the work. So I also abstain. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for the submission of a county development block grant application in the amount of $507,500 for certain design and construction of accessible curb ramps.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, questions or comments? This is a big project. If we can get this money this year, we could do a lot more handicap ramps. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising in ordinance to add civil enforcement provisions to the existing penalties provision for sections 5-503, 5-307, 5-404, 11-109, and 11-207 of the borough code fighting ordinances.
Second my, Mr. Pettis, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize acceptance of borough asphalt companies' requests to withdraw their bid for the 2023 road paving program.
Mr. Colm, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize awarding the borough's 2023 road paving program to James D. Marcy, Inc., in the amount of $842,553.43, condition upon the completion of the 30-day RCO review period.
Second my, Mr. Colm, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the letter from Jennifer Oldman, Kim Lee Horn, and Associates, dated March 1st, 2023, requesting a 60-day term extension for the Bristol Commerce sub-division 75 Commerce Show.
Second my, Mr. Pettis, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purpose of $2,500 worth of fish with the nail.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize payment of invoice for the borough grant match of $13,000 for the self-contained breathing apparatus for Bristol Consolidated Fire Company.
Second my, Mrs. Figueroa. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize payment of invoice for the borough grant match of $14,006 for the self-contained breathing apparatus for Bristol Fire Company.
Second my, Mrs. Figueroa. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 11.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Gilmore Associates to apply for a DDP growing greener grant program in order to seek additional grant funding for the mandatory vegetated swale behind Maple and Green Street Projects. Cost to apply is $1,300.
Mr. Colm, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to accept the resignation of an alternate to the zoning hearing board to add to the agenda, to appoint an alternate to the zoning hearing board, to add a motion to adopt FMLA policy, and to add a motion to reject bids for the old streets to be burned.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, all in favor? Opposed? I'm going to make the motions.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Sam Scowder Senior, an alternate on the zoning hearing board.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to appoint an alternate, Sam Scowder Junior, to the zoning hearing board.
Mr. Pettis, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to adopt a motion to, to put together FMLA policies, to add a motion to adopt FMLA policy, I'm sorry.
Second my, Mr. Pettis, questions or comments? Do you want to comment on any of that? No? Go ahead.
No. Your debate is just a question whether FMLA even applies to Bristol. It depends on the number of employees, but it's been recommended to us that we adopt policy just in case. If it does apply, and it does apply, at least it's a policy, please.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, to reject bids for the old streets to be burned.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second my, Mr. Petroci, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you have anything else, or?
No, I didn't.